Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, August 26, 2021, 6:00 PM to order. I'd like to ask Reverend Charles Cochrane if he'll come forward, provide our invocation, and lead us in our pledge. If everyone will stand.
Father in God in heaven, sometimes we do not know how to approach you or what to say. We know that all of our hearts tonight, as citizens of this great country, are so deeply concerned about the situation in Afghanistan. Father, we're so sorry and saddened by the death of our servicemen and personnel over there today, and other people in that country, other citizens of that country who have lost their lives, and even maybe some of our allies. Father, we pray for our president, that he will make wise decisions, that he will lead this nation in the way that will keep us free from harm, and will bring all of our American citizens back home safely. Bless him, Father, and bless those assisting him. Bless all of those who are over there and struggling with that great, great problem. And Father, we also pray that you would be with all of those who are struggling tonight with a virus. It seems that it's difficult for this to be finally defeated in our nation and in other parts of the world. We pray that soon this virus will be behind us. Father, I thank you for this council of leaders in this great city of East Ridge, our mayor, Mr. Williams, and all of those sitting on this council here tonight. We pray for wisdom for them as they lead our city. We want to thank you, Father, for the progress we've seen in East Ridge, and we pray for further progress. We pray, Father, that the best outcomes will be made in these decisions. I also, Father, tonight, want to give our thanks for our policemen, those men and women who protect us. Let us honor them. Let us be grateful for the sacrifice these men and women make to keep us free, safe in our city. Bless them. Thank you for the citizens who are here tonight, the ones, Father, in East Ridge that love this city and are here in the interest of what will take place. Help us to be good citizens, Father, and most of all, help us to honor and trust and love and serve you, and put you first in this nation, to know that godliness and the fear of God will exalt a nation, and help us to have that attitude. We love you, Father, and we love one another. We pray in Jesus' precious name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Helton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right. The first item under 3B is we're having a discussion of a centennial celebration by Dana Howe and David Tolliver. I'd like to come forward.
I want to address the council and then also everyone that's here, and then everybody that's virtually here.
Yes.
Also. Thank you so much for giving us some time this evening. I also want to say, David and I have been working on this event with a small team of volunteers across the city, some citizens, for a little over a year, and we've had a lot of help from the city manager, a lot of the city staff, the parks and rec folks. So I want to extend our thanks to those people as well. Everybody's been really helping and working hard. David and I have been working hard, too. My name is Dana Howe. I'm an East Ridge citizen. I bought my house here in East Ridge about four years ago. My husband and I have lived here, and we love our neighborhood. It's one of the great, special things about East Ridge, is our great neighborhoods. I also serve on our planning commission, and I walk my dog a lot through our wonderful neighborhoods in East Ridge. And I was walking by Andy Witt's house, I don't know, a little over a year ago, 18 months ago, and she said, "Hey, would you want to help plan this East Ridge 100th Birthday Centennial Celebration?" And I said, "Sure, I'll help." And then David and I showed up at the first meeting, and we were chairs. So we've been working really, really hard, and we have a lot of really fun stuff planned. I'll let David introduce himself as well, and then I'll kick us off a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is David Tyler. I've been an East Ridge resident for 13 years. I think it's the greatest city on earth, and I'm very honored to be the chair of the East Ridge Centennial Celebration. I'm also the president-elect of the East Ridge Optimist Club, and we've put a lot of work into this, and I think everybody's going to be very excited.
Yeah, yeah. So we really wanted to use the centennial celebration to honor the milestone of East Ridge 100th Birthday. We wanted to make it special. We wanted to make a splash, and we wanted to kind of bring the community something to get really excited about, something new and fresh. So we put together a really fun and exciting event. Admission at Camp Jordan on September 25th is completely free to the community, and we have a fun lineup of events. And I'll let David talk about that.
All right. Well, to kick everything off, scenic city multisport will be presenting a 5K and 10K race starting at 8:00 AM at Camp Jordan. We will have inflatable attractions and games provided by Shell Service and operated by the volunteers of Action Church. We will have an Allison Wonderland Arts, Crafts, and Activities section for kids, provided by the East Ridge Library and sponsored by the East Ridge Optimist Club. We have over 80 vendors, everything from home goods and jewelry to local art, small businesses. And we're going to have 14 different food trucks and beverage vendors. City services like fire and police department will be in attendance, along with codes enforcement. And then we're going to have the East Ridge Community Food Pantry as well, and local churches. There will be live music with a beer garden, with local breweries like Chattanooga Brewing Company, Five Wits, Naked River, Wanderlinger, and Odd Story, and we will have yard games provided by Top Golf. We are also incorporating community-oriented features at the event, like a mural by local artist Laura Dahlke, a historical film provided by the Brawley Group, made by local East Ridge citizens, Chris Brawley. The ropes course will be open that day, and a fishing derby will be hosted at 9:00 AM by the Scouts. We will close out the evening with a message from Mayor Brian Williams, and fireworks provided by the Chattanooga Red Wolves.
Yeah. So we are really, really excited. We've incorporated ways to really highlight the community, celebrate our history, celebrate our progress here in the city of East Ridge, and it's free, and it's a great, it's going to be a great community event. We would love for everyone to come out and see your faces and enjoy your community and meet some new people, and celebrate East Ridge's 100th Birthday with us. I'd like to open up to questions from the council or anyone out here, if you have questions for us. Some other things that you can do to learn more about our event is follow us on social media. Our Instagram handle is @eastridgetn100. Our Facebook is facebook.com/eastridge/eastridge100years, and our website is eastridge100.com. So, anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
First of all, I do want to thank them very much because they've done an absolutely wonderful job of getting this organized, but they also made me the volunteer coordinator. So I would like to know how you would like for these people to volunteer, because I'm going to need Buddy and different people out there, I see Charles, to maybe help us out. So what ways can they volunteer?
Sure. We had a volunteer meeting pretty early on. We'll host another one before the event, now that we're getting about a month out from the event. We'll have tons of opportunities to volunteer the day before for setup during the event, all day on Saturday, and we'll have specific time outbreaks and specific jobs outlined at the second volunteer meeting that we'll host before the event. Buddy else? Everybody planning to come?
And bring a friend.
And bring a friend? Okay. Earlier, I was passing around a box that you put names in. We have some super cool stickers and merchandise, so we're going to draw some names out and give away some cool stickers.
So while you do that, I wanted to mention, I think Representative Helton has been able to secure the Speaker of the House.
Yes. The governor's going to be out of town that weekend, but the Speaker of the House is coming in his absence.
Great.
And I've reached out to the county mayor, and he's in his regrets, and he has an appointment out of town already. But I've also reached out to Commissioner Boyd, and he plans to attend.
Great.
Excellent.
Yeah, we'll be excited to hear from people. Five stickers?
Five stickers.
Five shirts?
Five shirts. We can do this. Shirley Manning.
Back there.
Kenny Rogers.
That's, are you trying to pick that?
You dig the different part of the box here.
I think they put more than one of their names in.
We've got blanks in here. Lee Jr., Corporal Lee Jr.
One more sticker.
One more. And Annette Mosier.
Oh, nice. And five shirts. David has the shirts in his car, so he can take sizes and get them to you.
Yeah, if you can get with me afterwards, if I call your name, and then I'll get your size, and I'll get the shirt to you immediately afterwards. Let's do Charles, starts with an M.
Is it McCullough?
K Vickery. Oh, nice. David Bostain.
Oh, he wanted a shirt so bad.
And then I have Buddy.
Okay.
And then Alan Qualls. All right, if you guys could see me afterwards, I'll get your T-shirts.
So finally, we also have some really awesome flyers. You should see them around town, but if you'd like to get some from us, before you leave this evening, we have a whole box. We'll leave it sitting up here. Grab some, pass them out to your friends, or if you own a local business here, we'd love for you to hang it up. Or if you're in the virtual audience, just let us know, and we can get you one and hang these up. We want to get as many people in the community involved and out at the event on September 25th.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You all have done an amazing job and put a lot of time and effort in, and it's greatly appreciated.
We're honored. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item four, the consent agenda. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes of the August 12 council meeting. We did have an update on page three. I assume everyone has got that. And the declaration of surplus property. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Helton.
I was absent.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item five, communications of citizens. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council with any questions, concerns, For any business owner or citizen, they'll have five minutes. I will say there is going to be a public hearing for the ordinance concerning the tax rate. So the first one on the list is Van Price.
Oh, okay.
Next is Robert Gilreath.
Oh, okay.
All right. Then Steve Parris. Yes, sir. If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Steve Parris. I live at 1323 Orlando Avenue. For the record, I also own 1327 Orlando Avenue. Last time I was before you folks, might have been your very first council meeting, as the council as it is now, maybe your first, maybe the second. You recall, I questioned the honesty and transparency of city government at that time. I just want to say for the record, as two years later, I haven't seen anything to squelch my doubts. We have streetscaping that was supposed to happen on this end of Ringgold Road that had been approved, budgeted, and was in the planning stages under the previous administration that has come to a streaming halt. We have abundant of new growth, residential homes going in the area, which should obviously bring more income tax-wise into the company. Camp Jordan, the border relief, tax, border zone tax relief, was supposed to have been one of the greatest windfalls that East Ridge has ever had. Obviously, that wasn't true because of what is going to be discussed later, and the increase in taxes. I'm not going to get into detail on taxes. Before the record, I want to be shown, I still have a lot of doubts about the integrity and transparency of this council.
Thank you, sir. That's all that actually has signed up on the signing sheet. However, if anyone else would like to come forward, they have an opportunity at this I see no one else, so we will move into communication of council members. Start on this side. Councilmember Cagle.
I have nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yeah, I just want to give a big thanks to David Tyler and Dana Howe for their hard work. I know they put countless hours into that, so I just wanted to thank you, appreciate it. That's all.
Councilmember Helton.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Witt.
Nothing.
All right. I've got a couple of things. One is the Red Wolves. They are first in the USL1 standings. They took first place over the win last Saturday with Union Omaha, and they'll be playing this Friday night in Toronto. And their next home game will be September the 9th, 7:00 PM, against North Texas. The other thing I wanted to mention, and the press release went out just, I think, yesterday, Food City, they updated another press release that they will have their new store expected to open by early summer of 2022. That's going to be there at the intersection of Ringgold Road and Bales Avenue. I'm very excited about this. We reached out to the regional vice president and spoke with him, and was able to secure a location and secure a amazing 54,000-square-foot supermarket and gas-and-go that's going to be located in East Ridge, just a little ways from where the current one is. This store will have an in-store bakery, a deli, a cafe, fireplace. They'll have a hickory smoker, pizza ovens. They're going to do in-house meat cutters. They'll have steaks and fresh meat to order, expanding grocery and frozen food and produce departments, a floral boutique that will be staffed by a designer seven days a week, rapid checkout services with six checkout lanes and seven self-checkouts, and then they'll have a full Food City pharmacy, equipped with a consulting room and walk-up and pickup windows. And then again, they'll have a gas-and-go, which will include diesel, and they'll have a Starbucks with other amenities along with that. And they'll have a bank as well. Tennessee Valley Federal Credit Union will be the bank. So we're very, very excited about this development on the west end, that's going up there, close to the tunnel. Hopefully, this will be a catalyst to start bringing more things in that area, which we've been desperately trying to work on, and yet we've also got Dr. Pruthers, who took the Kingwood Pharmacy and has redone it, and then we've got things working in the middle of East Ridge, so things, I feel, are looking up. And lastly, I always talk about the centennial. Nothing more I need to say. Great presentation, and thank you again for all your hard work. I'll pass it to the city manager for communications.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Dana Howe and David Tyler for all the hard work they've done on the centennial. I've seen a lot of the behind-the-scenes work they've done and the countless hours they spent on this. It really shows how much they love the city, and we do definitely appreciate all of your hard work and everything you're doing. September 25th, looking forward to it. Quick update, based on one of the citizens' comments that we just heard, one of our delays, we have almost all the poles along Ringgold Road have been moved by EPB. That was a tremendous undertaking. And just within the last week, we have been notified by the Tennessee Department of Transportation that we have the notice to proceed on construction on the multimodal. So we are now in the process of getting ready to get the bid books and getting the bids out and moving forward the construction part of this project. And Adam, I'm going to put you on the spot for a second. Would you give us a quick update on the splash pad and the playground, please?
Yeah, happy to. So the splash pad, some of you may have noticed, we've started construction over there. We were able to get all the plumbing in, and next week, they're going to pour the pad. So they've had a little bit of delays with the labor and just getting, some of the products were on back order, but this crew was back on site yesterday and today, and so they plan on pouring the pad next week.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, a lot of things are out of our hands when we have to deal with TDOT and TDEC and other entities, but thank you for the update and the progress we are making. All right, we'll move into old business. Item A is public hearing for ordinance number 1150, the certified tax rate ordinance. So I will open this as a public hearing. Anyone that would like to come forward and address the council for or against certified tax rate ordinance now is an opportunity for you to come. You'll have five minutes. You'll give us your name and your address, please.
Charles McCullough, 1214 Reeves Avenue. I'd just like to say, a lot of East Ridge is having a rough year this year, especially now. I mean, COVID's coming back, prices are going up. Some of us are just now finding jobs again after this last year. I mean, we're trying to get off the mat. With this tax hike, it's like you're hitting us again, telling us to stay down. Mayor Williams, at the last meeting, I believe you said not to minimize, but it's just 20 bucks a month or so. I mean, sure, that's true, but, I mean, it's another straw on the camel, especially on our fixed-income seniors, among us who have lost jobs. This hurts the least fortunate among us the most. You also said you can't buy anything for the same price that you could 10 years ago. I'm sure everybody here knows that. We all have the same problem. That's why I think it's important that we not see another price increase from the city. I mean, frankly, we're also not asking the city to buy things for the same prices as 10 years ago since the last hike. 10 years ago, there wasn't a Bass Pro, there wasn't a Honda Powersports. You just talked about the new Food City going in. We've had 10 years of tremendous growth in East Ridge, and I think that growth money should be sufficient for our purposes. Our personnel cost for this year, this year's budget was, if I read it correctly, it's around 8.9 million forecast for this year. The existing balanced budget that was presented before the tax increase already had a 3% raise in it. The extra 600,000 for salary stabilization on top of that comes out to an extra 6.5% or so. I mean, take those together, you're asking for a 10% raise for city employees. I see, what, 40 people here, maybe? How many of y'all had a 10% raise last year? Year before? Anybody? Year before that? Anybody? Oh, one? We have one. In fact, there are a lot of people in East Ridge that got no raise, took a pay cut, and lost their jobs this year. Frankly, you're asking us to fund raises and benefits that are far more generous than anything a lot of people in this room will ever see. Mr. Dorsey, in your budget document this year, in the appendix at the back, you had a nice little org chart that has citizens right at the top, with the big cheese, the head honcho. I see a lot of people here who I presume are going to, I guess we'll find out, who are going to be opposed to that tax increase. I guess my question is, is that a real thing, or will our opinions be taken into account, or is that just lip service?
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Just one question. I'm sorry?
Van Price, 1901 McBride Road. Van, B as in Victor.
My question isn't.
Price, P-R-I-C-E. 1901 McBride Road.
My question is on a tax hike. I don't have a problem with a tax hike, but I want to know where it's going to go. Is it going to go to the police officers, the firefighters, and so forth? Because they're our first line of defense in anything. I've had five heart attacks. Each one of these officers out here know me because of the heart attacks. And I'm going to tell you what, you've got the best cotton-picking police department anywhere. I'll put them up against anybody. These guys right here, they put a badge on, their blood pressure goes up 10%, and they put a vest on, it goes up another 10%. They don't know if they're going to get out on a traffic stop and get shot. They don't know if they're going to go on domestic and get shot. The police department and fire department should be your highest-paid division in the city of East Ridge because of their qualities and the way they're operated, their chief, all their chiefs, and so forth, phenomenal, phenomenal individuals. But that's my question to y'all. Are they going to get a substantial raise for what they do with this tax hike?
I think you'll be covering that when we get.
I'll be covering that when we talk about the ordinance, sir.
You'll have.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Robert Gilreath. I live at 4902 Maryland Drive. I've lived there since 1978 as a taxpayer. I've owned several businesses, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the council for allowing me to make a few comments. In regards to this tax increase, I ran for city council in 2018 and 2020, and while I promised people that I talked to that I would do all that I could to keep a tax increase from happening, most of those people, which of the approximately 21,000-plus people that we have in the city of East Ridge, around 26% of them are either elderly or on disability. on disability, which means they're on fixed incomes. I really think that we need, or I think the council needs to really look and get more information out of where these, where this tax increase money is going to go. Now, back a few years ago, we had surplus and had money coming in with the Border Region Act. I understood we had surpluses. I understand things go up, but we all have to deal with that, not just the city, not, you know. We all have to deal with that. What I would like to ask the council tonight is, don't vote on this second reading. Table it and get some more information out there to the people. They just don't know what all of this is about. I thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Sir, if you'll give us your name and address.
Y'all know me, I'm Randy Sewell, 6610 Hilton Drive. I wasn't gonna speak tonight. I think hearing this gentleman here kinda inspired me. Going back, like I say, the seniors, the people that are disabled, I know in 2006, the state legislator enacted a tax freeze for seniors and those who are disabled over 65. Why can't we do that here? I mean, you have to be qualified for it. Not everybody over 65 will get it, kind of an income base. But for those who are struggling, why can't we do that?
Right beside you, there is a state program that actually is specific for elderly homeowners, disabled homeowners, disabled veteran homeowners, and widows of disabled veterans. So, the state has a program that will help supplement and reimburse property taxes.
Well, I was understanding, I mean, we've got, what, 92 counties in Tennessee, 300 and something cities. Majority are participating. Seems like it's more open, I mean, the cities or municipalities, it's got to be the one who sets it. I mean, same here as Hamilton County. Our tax appraiser wouldn't do it. He says it's a commission problem. I assume it's the same thing here. It would have to come before you guys.
I can comment if you'd like.
Go ahead, if you'd like.
One reason why we depend on the property tax relief program, it helps, like as you said, it helps all the seniors. If you do do a property tax freeze within the city of East Ridge, those citizens, let's say you had 20% of the citizens that might qualify, those citizens would never pay a higher amount of property tax on their properties, ever. If for some reason, the city needed extra revenue in the future, you would be putting the burden on the younger people in the city to have to pay the difference in order to bring in that revenue.
You know?
And that's where, let me finish.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's where that problem comes in. It's great for the seniors and we appreciate everything the seniors have done, don't get me wrong, but the way the law is written at the state level, once you do that, you can't retract it if for some reason, something else happens. So, most cities are just very conscious of that when they look at it and that's why the property tax relief program is so great, because if you had to, if you had to, if you had to raise taxes for, let's say, 10, even 10 years from now, if you had, if it's another 10 years till taxes get raised, if you had to raise taxes by 10 cents to get the revenue, you might have to raise it 15 cents to get the same amount of revenue because you have a certain portion of the population that will not be part of that increase. So, it puts an additional burden on the other people that also live in the city. I'm not saying that's not the direction the council may not want to go, but I'm just pointing out that fact.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand. Another thing, I was kinda looking through the property tax roll. Who may be behind, delinquent? And lo and behold, one of our worst hotels, two years, 2019, 2020, $400,000. You send these guys down there every minute. It just feels like now, property owners have to take up for what they're not gonna do. Why are they behind that much? Why are they still in business?
That might be a Mark Lutford question, but I know they have a certain amount of time to catch up and before legal action can be taken.
Right, and that'd be governed by the county. They handle all the tax collections on that, but you can't preface the operation of a business based on whether or not they pay their property tax.
I know, I know, but it just seems like it's, you know, you're coming after us because they're not gonna do it.
Well, at some point, they have to.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if they don't pay it, then it goes to the foreclosure. That's on the first Thursday of every June and it'll be four years after the back taxes are due, in which case, then it goes to public sale and that's when we would collect that, plus the interest.
I agree 100%. Y'all need money now and then now y'all looking at homeowners to get that money now, when it's really out there.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and your address.
Dave Griffith, 1512 Merrill Street. When you guys vote tonight, you need to remember that we don't need this. I don't have a problem with anybody getting raises, they deserve it. But when you interviewed, I stood right back there and I asked you about property taxes. I can't quote your exact words, but what it amounted to was you said, basically, you saw no need for it, it shouldn't be an issue with all new revenue. So, I mean, I'm getting, I'm lost now. So, you tell me one thing, but you guys are gonna vote to do something else tonight. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Again, if you'll give us your name and your address.
George Matter, 1608 Heather Street. Thanks for your comments earlier, Randy. So, Randy's my neighbor, he lives down the street. I'm a business owner in East Ridge and I'm also a caretaker for two disabled elderly citizens. Seeing how economic times have changed Chattanooga and the overflow due to the effects of housing costs increases, outside investment into the city of Chattanooga and how that's poured over into East Ridge, I have a concern. I have a concern for Randy, I have a concern for my parents, and I have a concern for future generations in East Ridge. We don't want things to change. I think keeping the people that are here, the jobs that are here, the police force, the people that work with Mr. Vaughn on the city streets, we're doing a great job and we're doing the things the way they should be. If we continue to increase taxes, not only in the city level, the state level, we also increase the burden on those future generations. We increase the burden on the elderly who have limited fixed incomes, who have medical expenses, who have things which are rising costs that are outpacing 3% of actual inflation that we usually use to assess how this economy is going. And I feel that we're also putting our citizens out. We're pushing out future generations of people that deserve to live here, not only myself, not only the elderly, but also the migrants, you know, future generations of young families that are trying to establish themselves because Chattanooga isn't affordable anymore. Hickson isn't affordable, East Brainerd isn't affordable. We need to preserve these ways of life for our people. We need to make things more accessible in saying that and increasing taxes isn't the way to go. I think with the amount of increase in economic activity, I challenge you, Mr. Mayor and the council, to look at more inclusive ways of bringing in more revenue. You know, I think East Ridge has a lot of barriers to entry as far as being low relative to Chattanooga for business owners that are relocating from Chattanooga because the barriers are so high, because insurance is so high, because crime is so high in Chattanooga. So, East Ridge poses an incredible potential to bring in that revenue, to bring in additional businesses that can be used to fund this difference. And I don't understand why that needs to be a burden of the citizens. I don't understand why that can't be for the massive corporations that are moving in, all of the resources that we already have and the resources that are coming. Why isn't it that we aren't looking at other state programs that are already in place to increase that? And it's not a means of exclusion to get businesses to go away and go to Chattanooga, it's a means of enticing them. With growth comes competition, there's supply and demand. And with the amount of demand that there is in Chattanooga, East Ridge has an excess of supply. So, I think it's a model that you guys need to be tasked with, to work out amongst yourselves, to look at what sources of revenue can be raised within the actual business community here and how do we continue to grow that without burdening people, without pushing them out, and especially with protecting our senior citizens and our elderly people that exist here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Mickey Spencer. I live at 713 South Level Avenue in East Ridge. I moved back here a couple of years ago to take care of my mom from Florida. I grew up here in East Ridge. I graduated from East Ridge High School way too many years ago. When I moved away back in 81, East Ridge was a thriving community and we all loved living here and we had a lot to be proud of for living here. I followed events from a distance while I was living in Colorado and Washington DC and Orlando and I was proud to be able to say, "I came from East Ridge." When I moved back here, I anticipated that I would be moving back to that area for which I was proud. I've been disappointed, very disappointed by what I've seen. Some of it's wholly attributable to the city commissioner and mayor and city manager. Some of it's been attributable more so to your predecessors. But the point is, is that everyone has the right and the obligation to pick up the ball and run with it and not continue kicking the can down the road. It's easy to say, "I want to raise taxes." It's easy to throw money at any problem. It's very difficult to look at the problems that exist and say, "How can we make these more efficient? How can we make these more effective? How can we use these opportunities to better address the needs of the citizens and the businesses of East Ridge?" I feel badly for the first responders because they've been fed a bill of goods saying, "Don't worry, if you pass this tax increase, you'll be taken care of." Wink, wink, nudge, nudge. You have nothing in writing about that. All you have are some vacuous promises. And I feel really badly for you because you do deserve to have your incomes brought up to being on par with what you deserve. And I'm just very frustrated with what I've seen of the leadership of East Ridge so far and it's not at all what I anticipated coming back to. This is just a big disappointment. We've, and again, you guys and ladies, you were not a part of the original Exit 1, Camp Jordan fiasco. It was promised us that, hey, if we bring this in, we'll have so much money, we'll just be swimming in money. We won't have to raise taxes forever or virtually forever. And it's not been very long before we're having to raise taxes, or so we're being told. This isn't right and I'd like you to think, each and every one of you, very carefully about whether you wish to retain your positions on the city commission, as city leaders, or whether you choose to take the easy way out and vote for tax increases. Thank you.
One quick comment on that is, it's not an easy way out. It's not easy to raise taxes. I've struggled with this. So, I disagree with it, the easy way out is raising taxes. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. If you'll give us your name and your address.
A Vickery, and I live at 1110 Tamarack Trail. First time I've been in a long time, but I thought this was important. I've lived here probably over 45 years. I watched, it was, I got married and I moved here and I love this place, I always have. I've watched it grow. I've watched some of the scandals that have gone on up here. I don't understand why it has to be so much more than what the state says. The state says 99 cents and you're wanting to go higher. Why can't you do 99 cents? And in a few years, if you can't make it, or the revenue is not coming in from some of these bigger businesses like Food, I mean, Food City should be bringing in a lot more business. Red Wool should be bringing in more business. They're building apartments, if I understand it correctly. That will be more revenue. Can we not do a lesser amount and see what we get rather than? I'm a senior citizen. I just refinanced my house. I'm paying a fortune to get it paid off in 10 years. I lost my job. Now, I am really on a fixed income. My unemployment's fixing to run out. My insurance is gonna go up because my house has been reapprised. So, now I'm gonna have to pay more taxes and more insurance. It's, think about it. Don't go up the full amount, do what the state recommends. And in a few years, if we're not getting it in here, then you can rethink it and maybe, okay, or maybe we can restructure some things and get it to even out. I agree, the police officers do a great job in the city of East Ridge. Our fire department does a great job in East Ridge. And sometimes I have a problem with sanitation, but they do their best. But, think about it, guys. I really think we've got a great place, I'd love to see it great. And remember, seniors won't live forever. We've gotta think about dragging the new kids in here, you know? Even if you do, you know, we're not gonna be here forever, even if you lower it for seniors. We eventually wanna die out and we gotta bring in new blood. And if the taxes keep going up, new blood may not come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I see no one else, so, did you wanna read that at this point or during the ordinance?
I'm gonna read the gist of it. Okay. This is a letter that we all got in the last council meeting and I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'm gonna read the gist of it. Says, "I am writing in support of the citizens against a property tax increase. I have appreciated the past tax remaining steady, especially when the uncertainty of the last two years. I do not feel we are in a guaranteed recovery yet and are still adjusting to whatever our new norm will be. Our businesses in East Ridge increased and in turn, revenue is more readily available to our city needs." Well, I've heard that comment right here on the podium that our sales taxes stuff stayed normal and was above normal. So, I kinda agree with this right here, so I just wanna put that in record right there.
Can I ask a quick question? When we ask who wrote that, because if those weren't your words and we have a public hearing, it's probably good to put the name and address in the record.
Ms. Susan B. Rector.
And the address?
836 South Germantown Road.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, I will close this public hearing and we will move into item B, ordinance number 1150.
An ordinance to city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to set the property tax rate above the certified tax rate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things I'd like to hand out. If I forgot my right order. And then I'll start talking. If you already have one of these, just, a couple of those may have to come back this direction. Okay. The first thing I'll start with, back to the transparency issue that we heard earlier. Since June, we have been talking about the needs, not the wants, but the needs of the city, dealing with our budget, the workshop, what we need in areas of personnel, what we need in areas of equipment, and all these sort of things. And at the last couple of meetings, as you know, every meeting I've been talking about what those needs and amendments were. We had the budget workshop back in June. We had all the departments come in and talk to the council. We had things such as court with salary adjustments of ten thousand, police, fourteen vehicles, six additional officers, work on records clerk pay and a salary step plan. With fire, that we had three additional firefighters, refund floating firefighter position, maintenance equipment for the fire apparatus, rescue medical vehicle, swift water raft, RIT, packed bottles, fire engine replacement. Animal services needed a new van. Street department want us to look at funding two open positions that they have that we've been holding on purpose. Traffic department wanted a laborer. Parks wanted part-time positions, arena roof repair, arena upgrades, top dresser for fields, water line repairs at the RV lot. And then we talked about salary adjustments. And that doesn't even include a new animal services building and a new police slash fire building. We went through all those in public at our budget workshop, which was recorded and is out there for the entire public to see. In addition to that, at our meeting in June, we went through, after whittling down that number, which was over four million dollars, we whittled it down to the proposed FY twenty-two amendments. And I gave you another copy of that in case you don't have the one from the last meeting, where we were reducing at this point of twenty thousand out of library because we had too much in their salary line for the part-time positions that were compiled together, combined together. Parks, general rec creation, they needed thirty thousand dollars to have additional part-time to help man the weekends for all the tournaments and events that are going on out there. They used, they were able to get part of that by reducing one of the full-time positions they had that used to be over at the East Ridge High School ball fields that we no longer are taking care of. Traffic control needed a traffic laborer to help with paintings, signs, signal inspections, things of that nature. Police, criminal investigations, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for two officers from the list of where Chief Allen wanted six. And in addition to that, in April, this council also voted for him to go ahead and hire two officers already at a, at a cost of about a hundred and twenty-five, plus a little more for equipment, things of that nature. And that was absorbed in this year's budget already. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the Hamilton County ambulance service. We've been over that for the last couple of meetings as to why we need to switch over to the Hamilton County ambulance service. And that's going to be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year for four years. After that point, the county takes it over and does their normal billing. And that's just the capital that we have to put in upfront for that and personnel because of the large increase that's going to put on them, correct? Then we talked about paving, two hundred thousand dollars to combine with the five hundred thousand we have in state street aids to work on the worst parts of the city. We talked then about salary stabilization. We talked about six hundred thousand dollars to put in, and I told the council the methodology as to how we came up with that number. One of our problems with salary stabilization, this was in June. You get to August, and you get the Times Free Press where it talks about Chattanooga, now has to raise more taxes to fuel raises for their city workers. So this isn't just a local East Ridge problem. This is a problem all around Hamilton County, probably all around the state, that we're having to deal with this. We are also going to pay for seven police vehicles. Thank goodness, we have some, some money coming in from the state for, for COVID relief that we're able to utilize on seven vehicles that we're able to get Stan, who's down by over fifteen vehicles because there's been no vehicle replacement program. There have been a lot of things that have not been done in this city because we have not raised taxes in over ten years. We have a lot of things that have been put on the wayside. We have a lot of maintenance issues that we haven't dealt with. Like I said, a lot of vehicle issues. Fire chief was promised, was told he would have a fire engine probably a few years back, seven hundred thousand dollars. Where's that coming from? We have all these sorts of needs that we are working through to be able to provide the quality of service that you as citizens need. And to me, that's one of the most important things that we're supposed to do. With that being said, I'll start with, if you look at the long sheet that says property tax versus general fund operating budget, a long one. The last time taxes were raised in East Ridge was in twenty-eleven. In twenty-twelve, the property tax accounted for fifty percent of the revenue of the East Ridge budget. Do I have that page? Okay. Fifty percent. As you see it, as you slide over towards twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, the property tax rate now is only accounting for thirty-four percent of the East Ridge budget, operating budget. So we have been utilizing other revenues to help cover the costs and the increased expenditures. But at some point, we are at that point where we have to be looking at additional revenue to be able to help cover it. Yes, we have had businesses coming in. You go to the local option sales tax line on here that we have. You see some years it goes up and some years it's been going down. In the last ten years, we've gotten a total of seven, just under eight hundred thousand dollars total in extra local option sales tax over what the base was when we started. Yes, that number will hopefully eventually go up. And that's one thing we are hoping. So maybe there won't have to be future tax increases for a while. With that being said, that is what, I just want to make sure I brought up that fact that when it used to be half of our budget, the property tax revenues, it is down to thirty-four percent, and we have been utilizing other revenues to help cover that difference. Next, let's look at the Hamilton County tax rates. That sheet I gave you. I put the, I call them the peer cities that we have here in Hamilton County. We have Chattanooga, College Dale, Red Bank, Saudi Daisy, and East Ridge. I put down what the twenty-eighteen certified rate was, what the rate was they went to in twenty-eighteen, what the twenty, what the rate is today, what the certified rate was, and then what the adopted rate was. In the last ten years, Chattanooga has raised their taxes in twenty-fourteen, twenty-eighteen, and twenty-twenty-one. College Dale raised theirs in twenty-eleven, twenty-fourteen, and twenty-nineteen. I think I left out the fourteen. Red Bank, twenty-twelve, twenty-eighteen, and twenty-twenty-one. Saudi Daisy, twenty-eleven, I'm sorry, this is twenty-fourteen. Twenty-eleven, twenty-fourteen, and twenty-eighteen. East Ridge hasn't raised taxes since two thousand and eleven. The county last raised taxes in twenty-seventeen. With all that being said, we have been holding line on not raising taxes and doing more with less in all of our departments. We have great fire department. We have great police department, streets, sanitation, parks, public works. All these guys and girls do a lot to help this city function at the level of service that you all expect and you all deserve. How many, if you're an employee in here tonight, please stand. Thank you. One of the things that, that we're looking at here is salary stabilization. Now, with this, as we've been trying to, to talk about the salary stabilization, this isn't just a raise for every employee in the city. That's not the purpose. We looked at this starting in June to try to take care of the issues that have come up with certain employees competitive-wise and, I think the right word, but competitive-wise and with other areas in Hamilton County and other benchmarks that we have around the state. So we don't lose more employees to Chattanooga, to other places. These employees have gotten cost of living raises in the last few years, which is great. But in some cases, they'll tell you, they are still paid less than Hamilton County, Chattanooga, Red Bank, Saudi Daisy, College Dale. We're just trying to keep up with the flow of where things are right now. This still doesn't get us all the way up because of what Chattanooga is now broadcast that they were going to start doing in August. So with that being said, we went through and tried to look at all the, I'm going to have Michelle Sanagali, I'll get up here in a second. She's the HR manager. She has been studying almost every single position within East Ridge government, trying to look at the trends, look at the other, the other cities to see what they are doing as compensation for all these positions. And with this, I'm going to let her go through the, the analysis page that I gave you as well to talk about this for a minute. And this doesn't mean, this isn't like a cost of living raise where everybody gets the same amount of money or the same percentage. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that we are trying to be competitive in the public sector with other cities and county workers that are in this area. Some people may get a larger adjustment than others. Some might not get any adjustment if they're already competitive. So that's the way we're looking through this, and it isn't lip service. We have talked to the department heads. We have this list here. Michelle's going to go through her overviews, if you would please, and then I'll continue.
Mayor, Council. So this is a little bit of an overview of the, the major things that I found here. Just to clarify, I looked at all full-time employees. Okay, this does not include part-time. This does not include elected officials. So nobody sitting up front, court clerk, judge, nobody elected. This does not include city manager. Okay? Sixteen out of a hundred and thirty-three employees are currently played, paid less than fifteen dollars an hour. Some of those are twelve and change. In administration, finance, HR, and IT positions are on an average twenty-seven percent below the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. And again, I did not complete a comparison to the private sector. Other cities will do comparisons like this against other municipalities. And the private sector, this does not include the private sector. All three court positions, again, not the elected official. The other three positions are paid less, are paid twenty-five percent less than average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. Two positions in the building and codes department are twenty-seven percent below, and one is fifteen percent below that of averaging, the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. The two full-time library positions are twenty-eight percent and thirty-two percent respectively below the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. In the police department, the records clerk position starts at twenty-five percent less than the average. Below, I have here the comparison of our patrol officers who are currently at twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents per hour as compared to College Dale, twenty-two thirty-two, Cleveland at twenty-one seventy-five, and Chattanooga at twenty-two oh five after their pending increase. Three positions, three positions in the street department are paid under fifteen dollars per hour, and two others are paid at twenty-seven percent below the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. All three positions in the building and maintenance department are budgeted to be paid at twenty-six percent below the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. In our fire department, all firemen positions, cadets, and engineers are currently paid eleven percent less than what the Chattanooga new rate will be. The current rate is also fifteen percent less than the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. In our animal control services, all three positions are currently compensated at thirty to thirty-three percent under the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. In our parks and rec department, two full-time positions are under fifteen dollars per hour, and three positions are in fifteen percent less than that of average, than the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. And in our sanitation department, the CDL drivers are paid eight percent lower than the average of neighboring and comparable municipalities. But this is after we recently gave them an increase. Now, since Chattanooga has announced their intention to increase drivers by forty-two percent, we'll see them fall behind by twenty-two percent, again, even after we have just given them an increase. And again, no comparison was made to the private sector.
Thank you, Michelle. With all that being said, it has been, it's been over ten years, as I said, ten years since it was last a property tax increase in East Ridge. All the other cities have had, a couple of property tax increases since that time. I think we have some of the best employees in this county and in this state. And we want to make sure that we keep those employees, that we're able to attract and retain good quality employees to help keep the services of this city at the level that you all need, expect, and deserve. That's where we were going with all this, Mayor. The other sheet I gave you that has the, that gave you all, that has a stabilization view on it, that shows you at, at the present, where Michelle, through her extensive analysis, and I want to thank her again for all she's done on this. She has spent a lot of time going through and working on these positions and these numbers as you just heard from her, her analysis. So at this time, we are very close to that six hundred thousand dollar number, as you see. And, you know, Chattanooga's given thirty million dollars for employee raises, adjustments, however you want to call it. We're looking at six hundred thousand dollars. Our employees are important to us. I think they deserve it. I think it's a great investment in what we have here. And yes, it's been ten years since we raised taxes. It's never easy to raise taxes. I totally understand that. But we have been, two years ago, when I first started here, I was coming in a couple of times before my official start date to help with the, the budget that year to look at things. And back then, it was interim city manager Kenny Custer and finance director Diane Qualls had to cut nine hundred million, excuse me, nine hundred thousand dollars out of that year's budget just to make sure it balanced, so we didn't have to have a tax increase that year. So every year, we have been working our way through as best we can to provide those services. And like I said, we've been struggling. We're behind. But when, when Chief Allen first came to me and said he wanted fifteen police cars, I laughed. I said, are you serious? He says, yes, it's been that long since we've had police cars. Fire, the same thing. Garbage, we had to, we had to take action and buy two new garbage trucks because of the condition of the ones we had. We had that emergency purchases for those. So this is just something that is really, really needed for the city of East Ridge. Like I said, it has been ten years. I do realize we're talking a property tax. Our old rate was one point three three eight one. The certified rate went down to point nine nine two nine. To get the one point one million dollars that we have been talking about since June and outlining in public since June requires, as we said, to go to a dollar twenty-five. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion for ordinance number eleven fifty.
Make motion to approve ordinance eleven fifty.
Second.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
No.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Ordinance number eleven fifty, pass second and final reading. Move to item C, resolution three one eight three.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to approve the agreement with Chattanooga Red Wolves Academy, CEWRA, for Camp Jordan soccer field utilization and programming.
Mr. Mayor, there's, we are still working through a couple pieces of that agreement, so it's not ready to come to council yet. We thought we would have it by today. There was a couple unforeseen circumstances, so we had tabled it to this meeting. I'd just like to go ahead and postpone it. It should be ready for the next meeting. But let's, if I could just ask for a motion to postpone, that way, when it's ready, I will put it back on the agenda.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to postpone.
I make a motion to postpone?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
May I ask a question before I vote? Do we have to remove it from the table to make this motion? Put it back out here?
No, because it was tabled, it was tabled to a specific time, which is why it was still on the agenda. So it was tabled to a specific time. It's, it goes on that specific agenda because it's that time.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. All right, we'll move to item E, discuss take action, dog park.
Yes, Mayor, Council. As I presented at the last meeting, that we did officially get the, the, the okay to change the dog park location for the dog park grant from the, we got, we got the, they gave us the okay to change it from Springville Park to for the dog park grant from the, we got, we got the, they gave us the okay to change it from Springville Park to City Hall. So that's up to the council to vote on it tonight, so I don't think I have any other discussion. I'd like to make a motion if I may.
Yes, in your motion, yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we use the, the twenty-five thousand dollar dog grant from the Dog Foundation, Dog Grant Foundation.
Dog Park Dash Foundation.
Dog Park Dash Foundation to construct the dog park down here at City Hall.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Council, excuse me, Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir, we had the fence give to us, what else give to us?
I've got some verbal pledges from some local business owners to donate the entire portion of the fencing project. And I've got approximately eight dog, dog park benches. Go towards the, the construction of the dog park. I'm sorry, correction, six dog park benches. I think that's probably about all we'll need, but I think we could get more if we need them.
Any other discussion?
I would like to make a comment. Councilmember Witt had some questions at the last meeting. I did do a little bit of research down at the Springville Park, and there is approximately eighteen parking spots down at Springville Park. And as for what we know for sure is if, if we had nineteen parkgoers at, at Springville, one, the nineteenth car would probably have to park at the street. And opposed to being down here at City Hall, I noticed that, I came down here a couple of times during the day, during the first shift hours. I know we had some concerns about parking, and I, I counted approximately anywhere from eleven o'clock in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon, there's approximately seventy-five to a hundred empty parking spaces down here at City Hall. And I visited again in the second shift hours where City Hall employees are not here, and there's probably a little over a hundred and fifty empty parking spaces down here at City Hall. And I found that most parkgoers for the dog park usually come during those second shift hours, so. And as far as barking goes, I, I don't think that there's gonna be a problem with barking. It's not gonna be like an animal shelter type situation. I think most dogs are pretty content when they're at the dog park, so there's, the minimum, you know, the dog barking is pretty minimal. So I know we had some concerns about distracting employees down here at City Hall and this and that, so. Just wanted to put that out there, that I did a little research on that.
Thank you. May I say something?
Yes.
Since last time, I have been contacted by people my age and people with disabilities who feel like to bring dogs to the city center when they have to come here for senior citizen activities or they're on different boards. They would prefer that the dogs not be here. Friendly dogs are just as dangerous to somebody who is disabled or an elderly person when they come up to you to love on you. So I have not had one person contact me that wants to move it from Springville to here. So I just wanted you to know that, so. I've had several who have contacted me that do not want it here, so.
Okay. Yes, sir.
There was something said about ADA and these two handicap parking spaces. Are they gonna be dissolved, or is it gonna be still left there?
You're asking me, I'm not sure. I'm assuming they're gonna stay, the, the.
We haven't gotten that far.
Huh?
We haven't gotten that far, but I would assume they'd stay.
Okay, well, there's something said about using it for the ADA access or something to the park. Kind of theory about taking handicap parking spaces away. Okay.
Totally agree. I will also comment, I would like the council body to also consider Springville as well as a future site. I think having a second one is, is a good thing as well. There's a lot of pet owners, there's a lot of people that like to go and walk their dogs and stuff. So I, at some point, I'd like to revisit Springville and have a second dog park as well, if the council chooses to leave it here.
I know I said one more, but one more. Since we've already got the fence donated, the six benches, where are we gonna spend twenty-five thousand dollars after building the dog park?
Over here or Springville?
Here.
Well, this isn't.
I mean, this is what we're.
This isn't my plan for here. I'm supportive of his plan, but you're asking me a question I don't know. I can get Cameron down here to tell you what was gonna be at Springville, and I would assume, Vice Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, most of those same features would just transfer from one to the other. And Cameron is nodding his head, yeah.
Well, I've, I've got some plans right here, if you're asking. So according to the original plans, when it was presented to me back before, you know, when I was told that it was gonna be at Springville, there was a fencing quote, I'm not sure who it was from here. I've got a hundred-foot by sixty-foot fence, fence enclosure for a dog park. That's the size of a basketball field, or a basketball court. So if you've ever been to a dog park anywhere in Hamilton County, if you've been to the one in Heritage over in East Brainerd, that, that dog park is over an acre and a half. This is the size of a basketball court. If you go down to the dog park downtown, down there by the, the Mock Stadium, it is approximately, I believe it's a little over a, just under an acre maybe, of dogs, park space. The proposed site that I was able to, from the fence guy that I had met out here at City Hall, we put together a double the size of the basketball court size and was able to put a point two four acre size dog park. So we're, we're still double the size of the original plans and half the size of the average.
So why could we not take that money, your money and your fencing, and put it down at Springville?
You know, I mean, there's, there's.
I mean, I, I'm all for combining them.
The budget sheet was nearly sixteen thousand dollars, and it didn't even include fencing. It had all the other little, you know, the poop stations and the, and the, we gotta run utilities, we gotta put concrete pads in, maybe some extra lighting, all the different amenities that go within the dog park. It's outrageously expensive. I mean, you'll eat through twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, and then probably have to do it a budget amendment and, and, you know, to, to, and finish the dog park. And at the end of the day, it's gonna be the size of a basketball court.
We use this lot out here, this grass, we use it for employee picnics and stuff, because I've been to employee picnics out there. We use it for national night out. It's, it's a valuable space to me here. Why would we put dogs out there? Why would we not put them at Springville where we are? Don't we have water lines and things already ran there? Where there were houses?
You don't know water and sewer from the old houses?
I have been out to Springville Park probably a dozen times in the past two months, just because I'm gonna drive by there and look. I think we've had abandoned cars out there. I think we've had property crime going on out there. I was at, there's cars sitting out there, I don't know what they're doing. I don't want to spend fifty thousand dollars on an attraction for the citizens to go down there and not know what they're gonna walk into.
I think if we put it down there, that the police would be patrolling it regularly and taking care of our park.
That was one of the biggest reasons why I wanted it down here at City Hall, because we got a police presence, we got an employee presence during the day and even when the staff goes home. We have a presence of people already down here walking dogs, we got the splash pad going in, we got amenities that's centrally located right down here at City Hall. It makes more sense, and it's not even flood zone, that, that's a whole nother subject I want to talk about. Having it down here at City Hall, I got a hundred reasons why we need to have it down here, and I got really no reasons why I want to have it at Springville.
Regarding the safety of, of the seniors, dogs are supposed to be on a leash if they're not in that dog park.
But they get off of them.
If they're in that enclosed fence area, that's the only time they should be off leash. We have a leash law in East Ridge, and that should apply to, to City Hall.
It doesn't mean they don't get off of them.
It shouldn't be unsafe. I, I'm in favor of having the dog park here at, at City Hall.
And it should be double gating as well, if I'm not mistaken.
And we got that field out there for national night out. We got five other acres over there right next to McBride Middle School that we could use for national night out. And if it ever gets used for something else, we've got so much other property surrounded this, this building that we could use for national night out.
I still think it's a bad idea.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and we have a second. So no other discussion, roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
No.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to new business, resolution number three one eight four.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the appointment by Mayor Williams to the East Ridge Planning Commission to fulfill an unexpired term of Mr. Mickey Spence.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we had several very good applicants, and it was not an easy choice, but I'm going to, because they're both great. Scott Cornelius, we're gonna appoint for the expiring, the unexpired term for our vacancy, which will be, I believe, eight twenty-four of twenty-three is where this, this, Mr. Cornelius will actually fill the slot until that appointment. So I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one eight four for Scott Cornelius.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Move to item B, resolution number three one eight five.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the appointment by Vice Mayor Chauncey to the East Ridge Board of Zoning Appeals to fulfill the unexpired term of Mickey Spence.
Yes, sir.
And my appointment's gonna be Mr. Eric Zitso. He's a twenty-two-year resident here in the City of East Ridge. I want to thank him for his willingness to serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one eight five for appointment of Eric Zitlow.
I can motion to approve resolution number three one eight five.
Second.
Have motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Thank you for your service, sir.
Move to item C, resolution three one eight six.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, awarding annual bids for street department materials for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Yes, Mayor, the, the city advertised for these annual bids for the street department materials, which we do, as I said, annually. It was, the bids were submitted on August third, 2021. After analysis by staff, we determined that the items on the attached page that you see, the items that are highlighted in yellow, we show the detail of each item and the bid price from each selected vendor. A couple of the items are higher in price than a, a competitive vendor, but because dealing with distance, the amount of time it takes for our employees to go out there and come back, in a couple of those instances, it, especially if it's a item that we use regularly, it makes more sense to pay that little bit extra, because by the time you count the time and the employees and the fuel and everything else, it ends up being cheaper. So those couple, as you see, I have an asterisk and it's highlighted there, those are the only ones that are exceptions to this. But otherwise, I would appreciate the council's approval.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one eight six.
I make a motion to approve resolution three one eight six.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Move to item D, resolution three one eight seven.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Chattanooga Transfer LLC for solid waste disposal transfer station services.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of East Ridge advertised for these proposals, and they were submitted to us on August fifth. The lowest and best proposal was from Chattanooga Transfer LLC, which is also known as Capital Waste Services. Their price for the first year of disposal at their facility on Wisdom Street, which is behind the Hamilton County nine-one-one center on Ammacola Highway, is thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. There's an annual renewal clause in the contract, but the whole contract cannot exceed eight years. Each year, the price may increase by the Consumer Price Index, which is a standard item that I've seen in other disposal contracts and in certain telecommunications contracts, things of that nature, where that's what they use to try to put an inflation factor in on what the disposal price will be. And these services would commence on September first. Just as a quick aside, we are also, as you know, picking up recycling materials within the city. As of last year, we have now, we used to be able to dispose of it for free, which was great for the program. As of last year.
Actually, we used to get credit for it.
Yes, and then it went to free, and then it went the other way.
We used to get paid for it, then it went to net zero, and now we're having to pay for it.
And now we're paying thirty-five dollars a ton to be able to, I can't say dispose of recycling, but to have the recycling processed at a facility. We're paying more for the recycling now than we are for the garbage. And that has not been factored in at all to any of our taxes, any of our fees or anything at this point. I just wanted to make, make sure you all are aware of that.
And that's been absorbed.
Yes. Do you want to say something, Robert? Okay.
Forward, sir.
Mayor Williams, City Council members. Also, you gotta remember too, that we're gonna be adding routes, and we're gonna need manpower to run them routes, because every time through the weeks and the months, recycle is increasing. It's increasing, and it's increasing. So we're almost where we, we can't handle it in two days. We're gonna have to increase the days of picking recycle up. That's all I gotta say.
And even more, even though it's more, it's the right thing to do. All right, I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one eight seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Yes, sir.
Okay, I've read the contract, and it says solid waste only in this contract. So what do we do with our yard waste? And our brush, and our white goods, where do they go?
Same place.
Except some of the yard waste may go to, like, brush, go down to your facility for chipping and things of that nature. But white goods are considered, they're considered garbage.
Well, in their definitions over here, they didn't. So that's the reason why I was asking that. And the rubber tires, we still gonna dispose those like we have been?
Yes, as far as I know, that's not my point, that big Chris.
Okay.
State still give us money back for those? They used to have a recycling incentive for tires.
They do over at Silverdale, they do collect tires over there. I think there's a fee to get rid of them over there, I'm not sure how much, Chris goes for it.
Okay.
Yeah, we used to pay to carry them over there. So, and another thing you said was that our recyclables thirty-five dollars a ton?
Yes.
So can we, of course, this is a question for you, Robert. Does the, can the recycle still be carried to the landfill, or is it still a no-no at the landfill?
I mean, the recycle can be carried there if you want to carry it there, but.
I'm talking about through, where we're going to, Chattanooga.
Yes, we can still carry over there on recycle, yes.
Be charged at the rate of thirty-one twenty-five if it's mixed in with the garbage every day.
I believe it went up, didn't it? I think it's thirty-five.
Well, that's what he said we're paying now. But I'm asking now, instead of me having two cans out there and my wife carrying the recycle out there, and she's carrying the garbage out there, just carry them all out there, throw them in one garbage can, we don't have to fool with it. Set it out on Thursday or Friday, whenever you want to come pick it up.
Yes, sir.
So is that's gonna be allowed, because I know plastic bags, plastic bottles of stuff at one time weren't allowed to be carried to the landfill.
Are you asking for two garbage pickups a week?
No, sir, I'm asking if we could throw our recyclables in the Thursday garbage, well, my day is Thursday. Throw it in the Thursday, Thursday garbage, and it be carried to the land. and it be carried to the landfill toward now. Some of this stuff can't be carried to the landfill because it won't deteriorate or rot. Am I right on that, Robert?
Well, we still carry it to the landfill.
But am I right on the, on the statement I made about it?
That's an opinion. I mean, to be honest with you, I, I can't answer that one because, I mean, that's your choice.
Yeah, I think it's everyone's choice if they decide to put all their recycling, other garbage in the garbage. But, you know, again, like I said, the right thing to do is try to recycle and, and preserve and be green where possible. I know it's going to cost us more, but it's the right thing to do for the earth, in my opinion. I, I recycle as much as I can.
I do have a question. If, if that's the case, we're paying for all these cans, too. That's a lot of money. That's sixty dollars a can.
And they can be put back in and painted blue or whatever and put back out for garbage?
We'll save money that way, yeah, I guess you can.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking the question about doing away with recycle and then putting it in our garbage. Now, you said you were going to add routes.
Yeah, I'd have to. Eventually, I'll have to add routes.
Yeah.
There's no way I can do it without them.
All right. Sounds like a discussion when we get the recycle contract coming back up. Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. We'll move to item E, resolution three one eight eight.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the mayor or is designated to enter into an agreement with ASA Engineering and Consulting, Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the survey, design, and construction oversight of proposed roadway access improvements for a hundred-acre development site.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, the City of East Ridge, we advertised a request for qualifications for, um, for this project. They were submitted back on August fifth. After review by the staff, we have determined that ASA Engineering Consulting is the most appropriate entity to provide the engineering services for the roadway access improvements on this project. Their services will include things like project management, land survey services, preliminary design, right-of-way acquisition services, geotechnical investigation for pavement and/or retaining wall design, utility coordination, final design and construction documents, bid coordination, construction engineering inspection, and final close-out documents. This resolution would authorize the mayor to enter into that agreement for us.
And if I may add, this is the exterior road. This is nothing concerning...
The entrances.
Yes, not in, not in the interior portion.
Within the property.
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one eight eight.
Make a motion for resolution three one eight eight.
Make a motion? Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? Yes, sir.
Okay, now, you said the exterior road, so we know we're going to Spring Creek Road. And we're just going to remodel that one. We're not going to tear it out and redo the whole road.
They're working on part of the road right now. This will deal more with the actual, on the Spring Creek side, this will deal with it when you get to the intersection. After we see the traffic counts and things of that nature.
Now, the other side, on Mac Smith's side, well, we're going from their property line out to the...
Ringo Road.
Going all the way to Ringo Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I didn't know that. I thought, I understood you say was going to the, after about the life care thing or their senior living home. We wasn't going all the way up in front of the...
Well, it starts at the property line, goes around that East Ridge Residence, is that what it's called, right?
Right.
Uh, then by Cracker Barrel and the hotels, all the way up to the Ringo Road corner.
How, how are we going to pay for this?
Still working through part of that. Right now, it can come out of border region, which we know that's one option we have, and that's what we're looking at right now, is to use border region funding for it.
We don't know how we're going to pay for it?
Well, no, the border region can reimburse it, but then whether or not we work through this on a TIF basis to try to have part of that come in, or whether we bond it out and just go straight back to border region, that's what they're still discussing. All we're doing right now is going ahead and getting the, uh, the contract and the engineer secured. This isn't construction or anything at this point.
Okay, my next question is then, um... ASA Engineering is the Redwood Engineering Firm, too.
Yes. They also do some of the projects for us, too. They've done Ringo Road and Multimodal and...
But this project is combining with their project on their interior road. Or are we going to match their interior road with our outside road?
Well, they already match up anyway because you got the Spring Creek side.
I'm talking about street lights, fancy street lights, brush, you know, the decorative stuff.
That'll be a decision of the council when we get to that point. Hence, that's why they'll be doing the engineering, the assessment, and design.
And you mentioned the TIF going back to the border regions to get it paid for.
That's one option, yes, but the border region can definitely be reimbursed, be reimbursed by the border region, definitely for this.
Two options.
Yes.
Okay, well, explain the TIF.
Tax increment financing. That is where you have a development that has, um, property taxes associated with it. You look at what the base of that property tax is, and when the development comes in, the value of that property increases and that incremental increase can be used on the design and construction and things of that nature for the road. Chattanooga has a few TIFs in place right now. That Martin Luther King Boulevard extension, that's a TIF down there. They're doing one for that paint, is it a paint plant, Mark?
They are, and I can't think of the name of it, but yeah, they've got, I think they've got three currently going on right now.
Okay, so now, uh... You're wanting to take the base property tax and the future property tax increases to pay for this road and then turn it back into...
And I'm talking just the, the property tax dealing with the development, not everybody's property tax.
No, I'm talking about just the project down there.
Right, that's one option.
So if our payment runs, uh, I'm just going to throw this out there, two-hundred thousand dollars a year for this road? Then we're going to get two-hundred thousand dollars property taxes, so we're going to end up with a net till we get the bill paid off. I mean, uh, zero. All right, so we're not getting any, uh, border regions off of the thing because of the packet we give them. We're getting very, very little. So now if we tie up the property tax, then we're going to be getting very little off of that. So then, how are we going to fund the police, the fire department, and all the services that we're going to have to put into this project? Keep it going? We're going to take the balance out of the citizens, the general fund taxpayers' money? Or what? So...
They haven't decided whether to do the TIF for border region yet. That'll be a, a council decision. That's not my decision.
Or we could enter into it...
Out front, so...
Or, or it's possible to do something similar they did with Jordan Crossing. We got funding...
Straight from the county.
Straight from the county to assist with the right-of-way. We had four million dollars.
That's a very good point because it would be city and county.
Correct.
If they went that route. Which is money we wouldn't have anyway.
If you recall, until we did that improvement at Jordan Crossing, there was nothing there but Bass Pro. Once that was beautified, there was lots of commitments that came in and, and it's, it's reaping a lot of great benefit for the city.
But by the interior road of this project at the Redwood Stadium, coming from Mac Smith, that road is going to dead-end somewhere after in the middle. Coming from Spring Creek Road is going to dead-end. So it's not going to be publicly used all the way through from Ringo Road to, uh, Spring Creek Road. So that kind of makes it a...
Hence, why I said entrances and not a road, yes.
Okay, so that kind of makes it a private entrance for the Redwoods.
Yeah, I, I think there is, I think it is connected. I don't know if it's a thoroughfare.
The plan I've seen wasn't, they went out there and they dead-ended.
If you like. Give us your name and your firm you work for.
Mayor and council, my name is Kenny Custer, uh, senior project manager for ASA Engineering. So the project, the roads on the interior have not completely been designed as it's going to be designed along with the exterior roads. We do have the interior layout and concept of how the road will be designed, but there's not going to be a dead-end. You will be able to actually travel from one end to the other. It's just not a complete thoroughfare, four-lane divided highway interstate because the idea of this development is to be a live-work-play pedestrian-friendly golf cart access. They want people to actually be able to move throughout the project without people running forty-five, fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. That's the ultimate goal. So it is connectors. There'll be numerous roads throughout the project.
First plan I've seen, it wasn't all the way through.
Yeah. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, a lot of different concepts that are out there. One of the original concepts was a thoroughfare. That was discussed. The, the, the means and access from Ringo Road have been discussed. There's been several different ideas. But we believe we collectively have identified the areas, which is from the north Mac Smith at Ringo Road in front of Cracker Barrel. Given the, um, the easement access that we have there, we were able to find out that EPB does have a twenty-foot easement. They are more than willing, and actually, they're bringing three-phase power in right now with their easement that allows us not to have a lot of right-of-way acquisition. As you recall, on Ringo Road, we spent a ton of money on right-of-way acquisition. EPB has allowed us to go all the way to the back of their easement, so that gives us an extra twenty foot of right-of-way for out there. So it actually makes more sense to travel, um, travel that corridor and plus the bones are pretty much already there, so we don't have to move around a whole lot. But still a lot of work to do, but in order for us to actually determine what that cost is going to be, we've got to start working on some design documents. But thank you all for the contract.
One more question. So did I understand you say we would not have to be buying right-of-way easements?
No, there's no guarantee that there's not a right-of-way. What I'm saying is that EPB's got twenty-foot easement and when I met with, uh, one of the directors with EPB, they said that they would allow us to use as much as their easement as possible. We could go all the way to the back of their easement, which is twenty foot. So hopefully, that will eliminate a large portion of the right-of-way that we would have had to buy initially because if you just look at it and you look at it on GIS, the right-of-way there, I want to say, give or take, maybe forty-six feet in some areas, um, all the way down to about thirty-two feet, I believe. I haven't looked at it recently, but that's, that's what I recall. But give us an extra twenty foot of width to be able to work with, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Move to item F, resolution three one eight nine.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee approving a lease agreement with RJ Young to provide copier-renter equipment.
In it?
Our current lease with RJ Young has expired for copier or printer equipment. They're proposing a new lease in which the city can piggyback off the Metro Nashville school pricing contract. Staff is recommending a forty-eighth month, month lease at a cost of nineteen sixty seventeen per month for a savings of three fifteen seventy-two per month. It also has unlimited prints and copies, which we're paying an overage fee now for extra copies over a certain amount, so that will eliminate that cost.
So then the three fifteen seventy-two is actually understated?
Yeah, it really is.
On the savings, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one eight nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Yes, sir.
Okay, the, so that's back here, City of East Ridge, new device. We're going to get a cannon, copier, staple, finisher, three-hole punch, and a fax. Cannon something, fax, floor drawers, inner two-way tray, inner finisher, and one HP cover plotter, so that's a total. Are these three different machines in one or are these, uh, individually as are listed, different machines?
Um, these are individual. We have one, they're proposing one cannon with features for one department, four cannons, these features for another department, and then the, uh, color plotter will be for codes for the big plans they have to make copies of.
So it's six machines still?
Six pieces of equipment.
Six, yeah.
Six are listed on the front page, then when you go to the second page, it just gets a little... Right?
One sheet is current pricing, what we paid, and the next sheet is proposed.
And over here, we're getting a total of one.
So you're placing six machines, yes.
Yeah, with how many machines? That's the question I'm asking.
You're placing six, with six.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just...
Okay, roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Move to item G, resolution three one nine zero.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the city manager or is designated to purchase nine traffic detection loops from Napco Electric as a sole source purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. This goes back to the discussion we had a, a few months ago dealing with the, the aprons, I call them, off of Ringo Road, like at McBrien, at Moore, and going down the street, which have been deteriorating. We have been able to work with TDOT and they have agreed to come back, as we've said before, and pave those offshoots, which is on their property because when they repaved Ringo Road this last time, they just went straight down. It didn't flare out at those intersections. So they're getting ready to do that this fall, so we're making sure that we have these loops ready to be able to install once they finish the grinding and the paving and be able to cut and put them in, which is trying to get ahead of the game.
Since it's a total of nine loops. I'm sorry. Entertain a motion for resolution three one nine zero before I ask questions.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion?
And it says where the, uh, the loops are on the agenda memo that we sent to council. Spring Creek at Ringo Road, one, McBrien at Ringo Road, South Side, two, McBrien at Ringo Road, North Side, two, South Moore at Ringo, South Side, two, Tombros at Ringo, two. That's your nine loops.
Thank you for reading that out. Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Milton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. We'll move to item H, resolution number three one nine one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee approving an amendment to the purchase agreement relative to the property located at fifty-three oh two Stone Street, East Ridge, Tennessee for the purpose of constructing an animal control facility.
Do you want me to cover this?
You do that or Mark?
You want to cover it, Mark?
Uh, sure, Mayor, yes. Following the, the meeting when we approved this, I think it was back in the first of July, in my discussions with Mr. Russell, there was, uh, currently on the property of fifty-three oh two, there is a dumpster or some sort of a trash, um, compact, whatever it is there. Mr. Russell wanted to work out a resolution to where the current, the property that the city would acquire in connection with, uh, the property on the northern side of it, I think it's fifty-three ten, I think, is, uh, or fifty-three oh eight, would have a shared easement for the location of a dumpster. The seller, Emerson Russell, would design that, build it, put the pad in, put the fencing in, and then it would be a shared in, in connection with the transfer, there'd be an easement for the park, for the animal shelter to get to utilize that dumpster. It frees up space on the animal shelter property. What will need to occur is that where the location of it has been identified as an exhibit to your packet here, it would be a, um, seeking an abandoned... it would be a, um, seeking an abandonment of just a portion of Stone Street in between the two properties, which would be the location. So, if that's, and that's what I understand Mr. Russell would like to do, that's what would occur here. We have spoken to RPA, and they have assisted with getting the efforts initiated on how to do the abandonment. And it would go through planning commission. It would come back up to this body for approval. And we could probably get that through, we hope, in October because of the necessity to have public notice and advertising. And so, I'm bringing it back to the council here because that amendment changes what was previously approved. And I want to make sure that that gets out, um, for the public to see notice and for this council to know.
Thank you, sir. Um, and if I may add, um, Stone Street is not a through street. It's already a dead-end.
That's correct.
So, this is a small portion at the tail end of Stone Street that we're looking at abandoning, if council approves. And Mr. Russell has agreed as, um, city attorney, which we just mentioned, that all expenses and costs directing the fencing, the pad, and everything for, to enclose these dumpsters so they're not visible, uh, would be at his cost. So, I will entertain a motion for Resolution three one nine one.
Make motion to approve three one nine one.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Yes, sir.
Okay. I know there's going to be a bunch of people disappointed with that it gets closed, especially coming out of the bank and going down to, uh, McBrien and going up to the red light and turning left on Ringo Road. Because trying to get out of the bank and turn left, or trying to come out of that back street and turn left on Ringo Road is going to be a pain. The people that live in the apartments back there, um, I'm going to say frequently go across the bank parking lot and go down, boy, I mean, uh, Stone Street there. But, said all that to say this, I'd like to ask a question to the, uh, Mr. Havil out there. I don't know if he's ever went and looked, are grease dumpsters allowed? Where I own a restriit and I come out there and I dump my grease in a container on the back of the lot?
So, basically, grease dumpsters, that's handled by Hamilton County and not the city. Uh, that would be something they would look at. Normally, you don't see them off on a different property, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
So, they are allowed, because if I'm not mistaken, there's one on this, so it's going to be moved from there up to here.
Right, so, they are allowed. They're just allowed to be on the property that is dumping the grease, you know. They, this situation where it's off on a different property, right?
The grease will have to be dumped on the properties coming from, instead of up here on the abandonment.
Absolutely. It'd go to Fernando's, I believe it is. That's where the...
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Hang on, I want to make sure clarity...
Let's clear this up.
The property that'll be abandoned will, a portion of it will be, then go to the fifty-three oh eight Ringo. And then a portion of it will go down to the fifty-three oh two. It'll go at the center line. So, that's a horizontal east-to-west road. The bottom portion will go to the bottom property. The top portion will hit up on the, um, fifty-three oh eight or fifty-three ten, whatever that property is. And then there'll be a shared easement on that portion right there.
So, you're saying Fernando's can pull it up the road, up to there, as long as it's on Fernando's restriit side of the center line?
The Fernando's can get an easement for them to put the, to have that there. And assuming that they've got the permission of the easement there, that would be a property interest that would satisfy to allow them to put the grease pit there.
They'll have half of that road or half of that abandonment already.
And if you go back to, um, uh, if you look on the Hamilton County GIS, and you know, it has like a twenty-twenty view, twenty-eighteen view, twenty-sixteen view. When you go back to the twenty, I think it was a twenty-sixteen view, Mark, we looked at. And there was actually a shipping container blocking Stone Street at that point, so people couldn't go through.
Between the bank and Stone Street.
Well, it's not a bank anymore, right, but that former bank parking lot, which, you know, that's, that's not a through street.
It's not a through street.
They shouldn't be going through that parking lot to get to Stone.
That is their parking lot, and they can prevent and stop anyone.
And it was blocked before, to answer your question about people might be disappointed going through. It was blocked before.
But it's been unblocked for years. But my main thing is, is about the grease trap being sitting up there and dumped.
I mean, that could be also incorporated into the build design as well for the dumpster. I mean, depending on what size yard a dumpster, you could put the grease trap in there as well, and they could still empty it, so. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be on, you know, the Fernando's property. It could be incorporated in that as well.
Yeah, and that's the whole design, is to have it enclosed, so it is in that enclosed area that's going to be fenced and the concrete pad, all the dumpsters. Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. All right. That's all the items we have on the agenda, so we'll move to item nine, which is discussion of the tentative agenda for September ninth, twenty twenty-one. First item is employee recognition awards, so there will be some that will have some milestone.
Been a while.
I'm sorry?
It's been a while.
It has been a while. But I think, I, I, my memory, I think there's at least three, there may be more or less, milestone awards. So, those will be presented in the next first meeting in September for the August awards. And then under new business is an unnumbered resolution, PEP Driver Safety Matching Grant Program, fiscal year twenty-two application.
Yes, Mayor and council. This is, um, an application that we do every year through public entity partners for a driver safety matching grant. It's on, we're going to go ahead and apply. We can apply now. The window opened on the twenty-third. And this is one of those first-come, first-served grants. We can apply now and have the resolu, and most of these grants, you don't necessarily have to have a resolution on the front end. It's mainly when they accept it, but PEP likes to have one from the city council on these. But you're allowed to turn that in after you turn in your initial application, so you get your place in line. So, that's what we're doing on this one. And the, uh, the money, it's a fifty-fifty grant. The money goes, you know, can go to driver safety, uh, training, technology. We're looking at, uh, using the grant to purchase some backup cameras for some of the city vehicles, as well as do some, uh, driver training for those that drive that equipment. And we also might start looking to getting some GPS monitors for some of these vehicles.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any discussion, council?
And it's usually five thousand or less. I don't know which class we're in, I apologize, but it's fifty-fifty, but it's usually that much or less. I think it was twenty-five hundred last time. I remember.
Any questions? Any other business, council? I see none. Thank you very much for attending tonight. This meeting is adjourned.